Ready? Good evening. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2013, and this is a regular meeting of the Salem City Board of Education. The entire meeting is open to the public. Jim, will you call the roll, please? Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Ms. Beck?
Present.
Mr. Myers?
Present.
Mr. Knoll?
Present.
Mr. Roll Letter.
Present.
This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is a meeting open to the public, but is not an open public meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please fill out a yellow card if you wish to speak. A limit of three minutes per person to speak shall be allowed. The public may address the Board only during the public request portion of the Board Agenda. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading, correcting, and approving of the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Steve?
Second.
Second.
Brad? Jim? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Roll Letter. Okay, so we're good? Reading, correcting, and approving of the agenda. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Howard?
Second.
Second.
Angie? We do have a couple corrections, so to speak. Under the reading, correcting, and approving of the minutes where it says "See Pages" in parentheses, that should say "See Pages 16 through 125." On page seven, under the financial report, uh, once again, in the parentheses, it said, it should say "See Pages 126 through 176." And in the consent agenda, on page 10, uh, item 14-080, uh, number two, Jeff Goll's name should be spelled G-E-O-F-F. It was a spelling error. We apologize for that. Then 14-081, under the consent agenda, uh, at the end of the statement, it should say "See Insert" as opposed to "See Page." Any other corrections on the agenda? Jim, can you call the roll, please? Mr. Roll Letter?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Superintendent's Report. A couple of recognitions this evening and a, um, informational item as well. First of all, I had the opportunity to attend the Eastern Ohio Partnership luncheon where we were rated excellent by the Eastern Ohio Partnership and received this award for standards met. The award reads, "We salute Salem City School District. Standards met. Education is the most powerful weapon that you can use to change the world." And, uh, we've, uh, we serve it along with other districts, or school districts in the county, uh, Mahoning and Columbiana, and, uh, that was a nice honor for our school districts and I accepted that on behalf of our, uh, entire staff. Secondly, as I, has, is becoming a habit, um, we have the opportunity one time a year by the Ohio School Boards Association to honor a reporter who does an outstanding job of covering the school news and, um, uh, this year is no different. Uh, we are going to be recognizing Mary Ann Greer. Uh, Mary Ann, uh, the OSBA Media Honor Roll for Salem City recognizes Mary Ann Greer for the Salem News for fair and balanced education reporting and exemplary service to our community, uh, presented by the Salem School Board and the Ohio School Boards Association. And, um, we have a certificate for you as well as the journal article that, uh, your name appears in there as well. And, uh, I could not, I think I speak for the board and I'm sure they'll agree, uh, could not be happier with, um, the, the work you do with us, uh, and being fair and being honest and asking the questions that need asked and, and having a, a journalistic integrity about you that, that we've grown to appreciate. So, thank you for everything you do for us. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Informational item this evening, um, in the past, at least since I've been here the last five years, we have had lunch charging policies, um, at the different buildings, but there's never been a backbone to the policies of, of what we do at each building. What is, what it has created is a situation where it's hard to, um, support or not support any position regarding the different policies of different schools and a lack of consistency and whatnot. For that very reason, I've, I've been working with Michelle Fisher of Nutrition, been working with the principals as well to sit down and craft the policy that we are going to be adopting here in Salem City Schools. Uh, this policy will go into effect on November 25th and basically, make a long story short, is going to uphold a $10 maximum charge total at our three elementary schools with no charging policy at our high school and our junior high school. Uh, and it also goes through the different steps that, uh, we will take with the parents and students, um, uh, who owe money, uh, for lunches and whatnot. It, it should be pointed out that the policy is very, uh, forgiving in the fact that we're never going to send a student away hungry. We're never gonna, you know, let them, or make them have to go through the lunch line and not have something to eat. That is not the, the purpose at all of creating a policy like this. But on the flip side, I will tell you that, and Michelle can verify this, just our three elementaries alone, uh, we're at the point of, uh, lost revenue of about a thousand dollars at each elementary already at this point in school district from students that had to charge or couldn't pay or, or whatnot. Now, that does not include students that are on free and reduced lunch. We're not talking about those. We're talking about students with the ability and families with the ability to pay. Um, and so we needed to feel, we felt like we needed to kind of put a halt to that and put down some parameters and say, "We're not heartless here, but we do need to address this because it's getting out of hand." And then we get in a situation where nutrition would have to, basically to offset those losses, increase lunch prices and whatnot to make up the difference, and then we certainly don't want to get in a situation like that. So, um, I would assume either tomorrow, Wednesday, or Thursday, the letters will be going home to every family regarding the lunch policies and they will go into effect, uh, starting next Monday. Does the Board have any questions regarding that? Okay. That should be the update on that. Uh, informational items. We are going to start with Mr. London. Come on up, Mr. London. Report on Buckeye.
Evening, everyone. How's it going?
Evening.
Doing well.
Think you got a good shirt memo, too?
Absolutely.
Take her away.
All right. Evening, everyone. Uh, want to say hi to my friends over at Buckeye Elementary, um, as I'm giving my report today for tonight. Um, first item that I have, um, is that, uh, we have really some, something to celebrate at Buckeye. We had 94% of our families, uh, come to our parent conferences. There were a few phone conferences there, too, um, but that's something that we are really proud of. The teachers and families work very hard to, um, first of all, schedule the conferences and then, um, the two conference nights that we have, um, you have to come and, uh, the teachers share and you learn a lot about our students and our families, so we really appreciate that. And again, just really celebrating that. Um, next item is Mrs. Donna Nickleright, Mickleright. She is our foundations coach through the Wilson Program, and she came and visited on November 13th and 14th, and she actually did some demo lessons for us. Um, she calls them fishbowl lessons, followed by breakout sessions for our teams of teachers. Um, she did a great job and it really helped us to feel good about what we're doing, that we're doing, um, effectively and with fidelity. She also commented, and she's been around all over the country to different, uh, schools that she's coaching, um, to help people with foundations, was very complimentary of our teachers and what she's seeing in the classroom. Uh, when she comes in and does a fishbowl lesson for foundations, you know, she notices the kids responding like they should be, you know, using the vocabulary, using the materials, so she just kind of steps in and takes over. It was, it was really a great two days, um, great for the teachers and she'll come back then again, um, later on this year and do walkthroughs in the classrooms so that she'll be able to, you know, coach the teachers and we'll do the same thing with the breakout session, so, um, again, it was really, um, really invaluable time for us, um, as we implement foundations. Um, the Salem Junior Mothers Club came to Buckeye on November 5th and they brought, um, representatives from the Humane Society and also the dog, which the kids loved. That was a, you know, as you can imagine, you know, high interest, uh, activity for them. They set up, uh, they set up three activity tables or three stations where they could select a book to take home. They asked questions, um, of the, uh, to the, of the representatives of, from the Humane Society, got to pet the dog, and they also had another activity where they created their own personal bookmark. So, we really appreciate them coming in and our second graders really look forward to that, too. And the fact that they give every kid a free book, I mean, that's really, really an awesome thing for us and the kids, the kids really loved it. Um, last item is thankfully, Mr. Nederheiser has agreed to help with our Thanksgiving feast, so that's going to be happening, uh, happening on November 20th and I know that the, uh, Board members will get a special invitation for that, so we hope you're able to, to make it if you can. It's a great event. Our kids love it. Families love it. I mean, there's already an air of excitement in the building and if you've been in Buckeye, you can see there, we already have the supplies starting to gather in the hallway, so, um, hope you can make it. Thank you.
Mrs. Miss Town. I just want to let the Board know and, and the invitation's going to be going out, I believe, tomorrow, um, just for your schedules. Uh, the retiree breakfast that we hold every year, um, for the teachers and, and classified staff that have retired will be December 13th this year, and you'll be getting those invitations in the mail. I'd like to put that on your calendar. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. At Riley, we have a lot of great things going on. Uh, we would like to say congratulations to our November Student of the Month, Samantha Kizner, Zoe Reed, Kelsey Phillips, Billy Nayler, Colin Helmick, Joseph Ketchum, Tori Bennett, Alex Lewis, Jenna McClush, Barbara Little, Nicholas Colbert, Vanessa Salmon, Madeline Workman, Molly Hopple, Skylar Bettis, Erin Townsend, and Jesse Powell. We had our, uh, Student of the Month pizza with the principal party and it went very well and it's something that they really, uh, look forward to and we really do appreciate the effort that they have put forth to be leaders in our building. Uh, actually, we rescheduled our Honor Roll Breakfast for tomorrow, uh, just due to a scheduling, um, glitch that we had. We actually had a total of 170 students at Riley who worked hard to be on the Honor Roll. We are very proud of the effort that they put forth, uh, by such, by so much of their hard work and effort, so we're very proud of them. Uh, tonight, under the direction of Mrs. Samu, our third graders performed at their fall music program. The program was entitled "You Are Our Heroes" and was a tribute to all of our veterans. Veterans were invited to attend the program and students were encouraged to display photos of veterans on our Wall of Honor. We also had special guests there tonight. We had the Salem AmVets Color Drill Team there tonight, and it was just great to see the kids, respond to them, um, just so much admiration and respect. So, we really appreciated the time that those gentlemen took out of their busy schedules to come with us and, and, uh, be with us this, this evening. Uh, two informational meetings were held at Riley, uh, in the last couple of weeks to update our parents on the new third grade reading, uh, guarantee legislation. There's been a lot of apprehension, a lot of anxiety and stress about this. The information regarding this legislation was to explain and then to address their concerns and questions, uh, and I really do truly appreciate the parents who took time to come and learn about this legislation, and I think it was a very helpful, they were very helpful, uh, and hopefully relieved some of the stress that they had regarding the legislation as well.
Great.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Whitaker is in Columbus with her fifth grade team at an academic conference, uh, so Mr. Kirkland will be presenting for her and then he will take over for the junior
Thank you. You guys might not know, but there's been a little bit of a, a joke amongst the administrators each month in and each month out on the, uh, the number of bullets allowed at each, uh, at each board meeting. Um, and the, the going standard, I think, was three, and if you look closely, and I know you receive these a week in advance, at least two schools held to those three bullets. And so, when Mrs. Whitaker asked me to stand up and speak for her, the first thing, of course, I looked at was how many bullets did she have? Well, then, that deserved another conversation between the two of us because there was, if I remember correctly, at the retreat, some discussion how long your bullets could be as well. But with that being said, uh, this, this, uh, small novel I have in my hand here, I'll do my best to represent Mrs. Whitaker tonight. I will say, though, of the, of the, uh, when I read over it, I was really excited about the first bullet because I've had the, uh, opportunity to have my own son have her as a teacher and the growth that I've seen, saw in my son that year and the experience that he had, I can sincerely say, "Thank you, Mary Beth Shivers," because my son had a wonderful experience, uh, under you and you made a huge impact on him. But at the same time, I didn't think that that honor, with at least not being here, should be bestowed upon me to talk about that accomplishment. So, with that being said, I'm going to call her older brother up to the mic at this point because I think that's an honor that, uh, that, in this kind of, uh, circumstance, that he should have the opportunity to talk about. So, with that, Dr. Shivers, could you come on up?
Sean, I think when we talked about the bullets, we weren't concerned so much about the numbers, the time, uh, that it, that it took, uh, to report it. Just saying, that's all. Uh, so, uh, Mary Beth, uh, had her National Board Certificate renewed. She was the first teacher in the district to get one. Uh, this had followed honors by the Ashland Oil Company, the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation, the Ohio, what is it called now, Coach, the Ohio Middle Level Educators Association. Um, and, and so now, the, the rest of the country is reinforced, uh, in its knowledge of Mary Beth, what we've known in Ohio and, and in Salem for years. Uh, so on behalf of, uh, of, uh, my family, on behalf of all, uh, SHS alums, and behalf of all her current former students, uh, congratulations, Mary Beth.
Thank you, Dr. Shivers. Um, Southeast Elementary School, students and staff recently participated in their annual bullet prevention kickoff. As part of their ongoing OVAIS program, the kickoff began as students brainstormed in their classrooms. A list of character traits that we all can practice that would help create a kind of bully-free school community. Once ideas were discussed, students and staff donned a new tee-shirt designed by the OVAIS Committee. A school photo was taken to commemorate the message of being kind to each other, um, and I saw that picture, I don't know if you saw that, yet, all the kids were in the, uh, outside of the school and each had puzzle pieces in their hand and I believe they were in the shape of an S for Salem. Um, but that being said, they created a school-wide display, the message of being kind to each other. Um, lost my spot here, sorry.
Bullet two.
Bullet two. Halfway down through. With an individual puzzle piece advertising a character trait that each person would focus on demonstrating throughout the school year. Honesty, kindness, respectful, courageous, and joyful are a few of the many words on display in the cafeteria as ongoing reminders of our commitment to being a bully-free school. A school-wide scavenger hunt was also part of the week's activities. Each classroom traveled through all the homeroom solving problems that required teamwork to be successful. Once successful, each group was given a piece to the scavenger hunt puzzle. The student's final task was to put the scavenger hunt puzzle together. The message on the puzzle was solve problems with kindness. To conclude the kickoff, each homeroom teacher conducted a, a discussion about the power of kindness and that only by working together, we can solve the problem of bullying. Veterans Day celebrations at Southeast included a luncheon where 21 veterans were special guests. The cafeteria was decorated in red, white, and blue where introductions were made by the students. Stories were shared as select member, I'm sorry, and select members of the sixth grade played two patriotic songs. In the evening, the celebration continued with the fifth and sixth grade music classes performed. Student art stories and poems were also on display. Thank you to the student council for volunteering time before school and during recess making over 200 ribbons for our veterans and guests to wear. Special thanks also to Ms. Pyatt, Mr. Kabasa, for conducting yet another wonderful program at Southeast School. As a follow-up to the Southeast September Board Report on School-Wide Intervention Practices, current student data monitoring, reading, and mathematics has shown overall growth as measured by AIMS Web Strategic in Progress Monitoring. Flexible group interventions during Quaker time and reading and writing workshops are focused on reading fluency or reading comprehension and math computation or math application. And lastly, Southeast Technology Team that attended the DLC Conference in Boston last summer continues to conduct monthly meetings for our staff. These professional development sessions to date have been designed to enhance our ability to use data which is AIMS Web and communicate Google Chrome more effectively. All teachers applied what they learned at the October meeting during our recent parent teacher conferences. Teachers shared AIMS Web graphs and the instructional plan their child participates in during Quaker time and the reading and writing workshop, in part as a result of this data. Junior high, anybody got a glass of water? Um, I want to congratulate Amy Cochran and Nikki Roth, Byron, Jen Pitts, for being selected to participate in a STEM project that is being sponsored by NASA and the CCH Environmental Group, formerly known as the CCH Soul Waste District. As part of this partnership, these three educators will receive training in, in creating comprehensive inquiry-based learning activities using environment as a theme. NASA and the CCH Group will be providing teachers with four workshops over the academic year and support teachers with free lesson plans, pre and post-test, access to all NASA technology, thousands of videos of project support, materials for completion of workshops, et cetera. As part of the program, these three are required to attend three workshops. The workshops will require them to miss one day in both November and February as well as three days in May, where they will physically be at a NASA, will be at NASA conducting hands-on activities. No, that's not Florida nor, nor is that Texas, that will be in Cleveland, which they sadly found out at their first meeting. In addition, there will be several days during the summer before school starts for additional training. As part of the agreement, the building principal, myself, must also attend at least one of the training sessions being offered. So, congratulations, I understand they went this past Friday night, spent the night, and, uh, and really had a good experience. Uh, we will be sponsoring banquet at Salem along with the, uh, the high school staff on next Monday. Um, in, in that, uh, we had a lot of people contributing money for that event, uh, from both the, uh, central office and the high school and junior high staff. Um, Michelle Fisher, Director of Food Service and her staff will be instrumental in cooking, uh, most of the menu, however, Mr. Brock is donating all the meat for that event and cooking that for the event that day. And lastly, our building leadership team has been meeting on a regular basis to identify strategies and closing achievement gap among a certain subgroup with a student population. In addition, they have begun to look at the process of creating student learned outcomes. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Um, in follow, in following up with, with what other schools did with the, with Veterans Day, uh, SHS Dean of Students and former Marine Corps, uh, veteran, uh, former Marine Corps veteran, former Marine Corps member, Hank Brock delivered his annual Veterans Day message via our video broadcast system. If you saw "School is Cool" yesterday, you saw step-by-step, uh, pictorial presentation of how that works each morning. With the help of Senior Dylan McKinley, uh, McKinney, excuse me, Dean Brock added photographs and music to his presentation this year. We're looking forward to upgrading our software, our, uh, uh, video camera and the soundboard to enhance, enhance audio quality. Uh, 16 SHS students sat for the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery on Wednesday, the 13th of November. ASBAT was the most widely used multiple aptitude test in the world, and although the tests are used to advise students regarding placement in the military, um, it, it can also be used for career exploration, and students are nowhere, in no way is bound to join any branch of the military. And finally, the SHS Building Leadership Team, J.B. Comets, Kelly Page, Will Klusenich, Mike Apache, Rob Mox, and myself met on Thursday, the, uh, 7th of November to discuss student learning outcomes. The whole district is working on these now. Um, we're, we're kind of ahead because we didn't have to work on some of the other things that, that the other schools are working on, and we're going to have, uh, two days from now, we're going to have our first SLOs. We'll share those with the district leadership team at our December fourth meeting. Um, that's it.
I also wanted to say thank you to Michelle Fisher for being here this evening and, and I think, uh, what'd you make up with over there, Michelle?
Strawberry, raisins, cabbage.
Strawberry cabbage. And she's had the board, uh, little taste of heaven, I guess, if you like that type of thing. I'm a big fan, but, uh, was it good?
Yeah.
Was it good? Good. So, thank you for being here. Michelle's doing a great job as, uh, leading nutrition this year, so keep up the great Hearing of public requests. Financial report. May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Steve?
Second.
Second.
Brad? Jim?
I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to, um, attend two seminars this past week. Uh, one was the Sunshine and, um, Open Public Request Meeting. Um, that's held each year by the, uh, State Attorney General, and also on Friday, uh, attended the Affordable Care Act meeting, um, sponsored by the Stark County of Governments, uh, which we belong to with our health care, and, uh, both provided good, uh, good information, um, regarding the upcoming changes in the Affordable Care Act. As you see before you, the, uh, financial records for the month of October, um, the balance sheet report, and also the other, um, reports behind it, um, everything's in balance and, uh, through the month of October.
Just real quick, though, I'll say through a board, it looks like expenses for the year are, everything seems to be pretty much in line with where we had budgeted along with revenue, uh, maybe a hair over on revenue, but that's more or less towards timing, correct?
Correct. And also, too, there were some items that were paid ahead of time, um, just to, just to make sure that we got those items in place, um, such as our House Bill 264 loans, uh, we made sure that those were paid a little bit ahead of time, um, so we see some, um, jumping in those areas, um, which will, um, be offset this month by not having to pay
Other questions? Hold the roll, please. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Roll Letter?
Yes.
Finance Committee, report on bills. May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Howard?
Second.
Second.
Angie? Steve?
Howard?
Not that much. Any other discussion? Jim? Can you call the roll, please? Mr. Roll Letter?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I got a little bit trigger happy there. You just don't like to read it. Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a Steve's deal, usually. So, we are approving Salem City School District checks, number 082414 through number 082658, number 131001 through 131005, 131009 through 131011, and number 131017 through number 131019, dated 10/113 to 10/3113, totaling $2,236,000. Yeah. Exactly. Did you start from the beginning for us again? No. Totalling. We love it when there's so many checks, don't we, Jim? Jim, will you call the roll, please? That's right. Uh, Mr. Roll Letter?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Building and grounds, committee report?
Uh, we did have a building and grounds committee meeting, pretty much just wrapped up the rest of the stuff for the Riley wall. Um, also, we discussed the track, which we took care of getting the, the other two lanes fixed. Um, Tom, do we have any idea when they're going to be able to get in to do that?
It's all about weather. Uh, they're, they're waiting to get, you know, a break in some dry weather before so the track can dry out a little bit and then make sure that it can be dried after they, they, you know, cut it out, so. If they can get a break, I'm assuming they're going to try to get in this week because it's... because it's, I think it's going to be clear until Friday. I mean, as soon as they can get in, they're going to get in, because they're going to start battling dropping temperatures as well, so.
So did that, the other thing that we did, we started, started creating committees for building renovation, I got your problem, Andrew, I can't talk, which goes towards our goal number five, which is preparing for planned district-wide facility renovations. It's something that we've been talking about. We have been saving our PI money for that, and I think we have committees for Buckeye and Riley, and we're waiting to do Southeast, junior high, and high school, pretty much to go out and get us some information on all the different buildings. We're looking at room sizes, how big they are, where windows are, where chalkboards are, all the stuff inside of them, closets. That way, we have a good idea on how many different types of rooms we're dealing with in all the different buildings. Once we get that information, then we'll start moving forward on trying to get some costs on what it is going to be to update buildings, the rooms, and like I said, that was part of our goal number five. It's something that we have been saving our money for from the PI to be able to go back and do this without going to the taxpayers to ask for money, which in turn goes back to when we did all of our goals a few years, a few years ago, meeting with people, and they asked for us to keep our buildings and to renovate them. So that's what we're working on with building and grounds.
Thank you, Steve, very well spoken.
Yeah.
We still have chalkboards, Steve?
We do.
Do we?
Matt, do you use your chalkboard?
It's in the room, I don't use it.
Audit and finance committee report?
Audit and finance, we had our meeting the other day, just a short one to go over our monthly forecast. We went over that, just to make sure everything was looking pretty good. It's something that Jim has started doing the last couple of months to make it easier for us to look at. We do have an audit and finance committee meeting this Thursday, which is our entire group to go over this and also to start working on some other things in the future. So that's all.
Education and tech committee report?
We will be meeting prior to the December board meeting, so we'll have a report for you then.
Employee relations?
We did meet last week, and we began some discussions, looking at planning for employee salary and benefit programs going forward, and so we'll have more on that as we find our staff.
Thank you. Community relations committee report?
We two plan on meeting prior to the December meeting, it's just the group getting together and being able to get some dates aligned with each other.
Should we go on vacation all the time? Howard, take a break the next time.
Let's see, just me.
You guys are just jealous.
Honestly.
You're right. That's all it is.
Twenty days in Florida, how can you not be jealous?
It's a working vacation, Mr. Bailey. New business consent agenda items? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Steve, second. Brett?
Is it my turn?
Discussion? Nothing?
Just for curiosity, there was one, ten days in Florida, Mr. Bailey. Hey, Tom, just for curiosity, the 1409 to all these winter gain positions, this is something new that we have to do.
Right. Basically, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation has changed the law to make all employees, to make them all officially school employees for liability reasons, and, and as in the past, they used to just be seasonal employees, you didn't have to board approve them, they were paid by the school district, but weren't necessarily school employees. The BWC came through and said that anybody that's working for you now that takes tickets, does seat ushering or anything like that, now has to be officially by law a school employee. Therefore, you will see them now regularly on board agendas to be approved as school employees and be paid through by payroll.
Other comments? I, I know that Angie attended the OSBA conference, capital conferences, past few weeks ago. Being at the board attends that often, and this is your first experience, I'd like to know if you have any thoughts or comments you make?
Um, yes, I attended, I think, five or six total seminars.
You were required to do nine.
I was, in two days. But having said that, I, the one that I liked the most was they talked about leading versus management, and how we need to aspire to be leaders and not managers of people in whatever position we hold, whether it's administration, board, making some really good tips on how to do that. That was one of them, and then others for policy, things of that nature.
Fun stuff.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for attending. Other comments? Discussion? Jim? Will you call the roll, please? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Roll Letter?
Yes.
Executive session. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education adjourn into executive session for the employment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demolition, or compensation of an employee or official or regulated individual unless the employee, official, or regulated individual requests a public hearing. No action will be taken. May I have a motion to go into executive session? Brett?
Second.
Howard? Jim, will you call the roll, please? Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Roll Letter?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Thank you for attending. Are you hurting yourself?
I can't stand it.
I know. It's like sitting on concrete.